I walked out the door without water. That's not why I uh. Firstly, I have my picture for the website. That's the one we took last week. I just I'll have it for you.
Okay.
Paul's got it on his own too.
What's that?
The picture approved by website.
Oh, yeah.
And the one I sent him?
Yes.
He approved it.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, January 23, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Andy Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk Baugh, can you please take the role?
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, with a quorum, we will continue this meeting. At this time, with our proclamations and presentations, we have the introduction to the new code enforcement officer, Michael Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. I get privileged tonight of introducing our newest code officer. This is Michael Lopez. He's our newest code officer. He's been on for about two weeks now, so you'll see him out and about. Get a chance, say hi to him. He uh he's a Mount Pleasant resident. He came he's come he's come to us from uh came to us from I Ride, Isabella County I Ride, where he was a dispatcher and a supervisor. So we're excited to have him. And he's also here with his two lovely twin daughters. And his wife unfortunately wasn't able to join us tonight, but uh he's excited to be here today.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will ask manager dissents to present the 2022 goals and objectives.
All right, good evening, City Commission. I was just going to give a very brief update on the 2022 goals that we completed last year ahead of our next Goals and Objectives meeting, which if it all goes well tonight, will be scheduled for Monday, February 6th. So our 2022 operating budget master plan goals, they all coincided with the city's master plan in 2022. So goal one was to strive to ensure viable land uses that ensure that secure neighborhoods, enhance parks, and encourage vital businesses through sensible infill, complementary services, and targeted preservation. This included reviewing initial implementation of property maintenance standards and recommending potential changes to the ordinance. We began those conversations around quarter four of last year. Now they are uh we have moved forward with a recommendation of the City Commission, and we'll hear more from interim fire chief Doug Lobzinger this evening on that as well. Complete the implementation of the grant and Hodag-funded Neighborhood Enhancement Program with any funds remaining from 2021. It is likely an additional grant request for 2022 may be awarded. That was completed in 2022 as well. Based on research provided by CMU Class in 2019 and follow-up projects in 2021, develop incentive program goals and programs for owners occupied housing units, which may include recommended areas for neighborhood enterprise zones. So we introduced the pilot concept to the City Commission in quarter four of 2022, and we anticipate moving forward with more discussion on the neighborhood enterprise zones next month. Goal two is to encourage smart, inviting, and attractive streets through infrastructure and operational investments that link people to places by walking, biking, driving, and transit. Goal one was reconstruct the following downtown alleys between Michigan and University. Now, that one did get moved to 2023 due to some property ownership issues, but we are moving forward and discussing that with the current property owner. And then also between University and Franklin, that was completed. Establish framework for neighborhood traffic calming programs. We collected data throughout 2022, and in 2023, we anticipate coming back to the City Commission with some recommendations based on that data. We reconstructed the following streets, Crepo, Illinois, and Brown Street. Work with MDOT to begin implementation of analysis needed for Mission Street corridor options. That was moved to 2023 because in 2022, unfortunately, MDOT had moved the funding for that project off to another project, and there was no promise for funding going into the next year. Staff has a number of meetings scheduled with MDOT in quarter one of this year to try to get that project back on track. Replacement of existing sidewalks, 2022, we completed those projects. Constructed new sidewalks on Southmore, Crepo, and Bellows, that was completed. We also completed the implementation of Phase Two of tree abatement to provide FAA-required safe slope approach at the airport. We began design work of the taxiway rehabilitation and light improvements. That design work is complete and will be moving forward with a project in 23. Evaluating staffing levels at the airport to ensure appropriate service levels can be maintained, that was also done mid-year in 2022, which led to the promotion of a part-time individual to a full-time assistant airport manager position. Complete design for reconstruction of parking lots four and five. Now, the design work for that was moved to 2023. Engineering staff is working on that right now. We anticipate having that done within the first quarter and still moving forward with the project in 23. Review preferred parking management for existing parking spaces downtown and identify enforcement options. We'll be having that conversation in first quarter of 2023 this year. Activate the city's most underutilized sites to realize the value of nearby public and private assets through adaptable, durable, and future-facing structures and landscapes. Complete the archaeological work at the Mount Pleasant Center. That's been moved to 2023 as the city's had a number of um issues with the state on that. We do anticipate a update from the city attorney at our next City Commission meeting on February 13th. Installation of pedestrian lighting on Illinois, that was completed. And develop of a long-term plan for the replacement of downtown streetscape. That was moved to 2023 as we were working very hard in pursuing grant funding for Town Center towards the end of 2022. Unfortunately, we did not get that. We'll be moving forward with this project. We anticipate completion of this at the end of quarter two, 2023. Goal four is to build the value of the city's expansive park system beyond site borders to achieve synergy between ecological environments and program spaces while elevating the system appeal to residents and visitors. Canal Street Park improvements, the 2022 bids that came back were much, much higher than our budgeted expense. We're unable to move forward with those in 2022. We decided to push those ahead to 2023, hoping that we get a better bid environment. And so when those bids come back, staff will be making an evaluation at that time. Create development plan for Indian pines. That almost got done at the end of last year. Staff has a final, final draft of this. We anticipate coming forward to the City Commission within the next month. Begin working with Mid-Michigan Pathways, Union Township, and Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe for the design of the pathway connection from Pickard Street to Hannah's Barcork or possibly River Road. That design work has been completed. Staff is aggressively seeking grants in order to make that project happen either this year or next. Parks capital projects, that includes the expanded Island Park Restrooms, as well as the expanded Nelson Park Equipment Building. Though both of those were started in '22, however, due to just construction schedules, we were unable to complete them in '22. We anticipate completion either right at the end of first quarter or the beginning of second quarter, 2023. Upgrade registration software to enhance online registration process in the Rex Department. That got completed last year. Coordinate with CMU's Recreation, Parks, and Leisure Department to develop at least one outdoor-focused program highlighting the Chippewa River. Rex completed that last year. Continue work with environmental consultant and EGLE on proper assessment and remediation for former city landfill adjacent to the Chippewa River. We completed our stated 2022 testing, and this project is going to be ongoing in 2023 as the further as there is further testing to to complete. Horizon Park improvements, including redesign, tennis court repair, and add pickleball courts, that's been moved to 2023. Staff's looking at more cost-effective ways of doing that and other options. Goal five is to foster collaboration in attaining a safe, healthy, fiscally solvent, and accessible city that is reflective of community culture, proactive to community preferences, and equitable in community resources. Review utilization of Economic Initiatives Fund for downtown marketing based on prior two-years' experience, that was completed last year. Installation and create interactive artwork in downtown to create a draw and/or a sense of place, that's been moved to 2023. The city's been working with the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan to try to identify an artist who might be able to do a series of grandfather-teaching murals. And so we are working very diligently to try to identify artists that might be able to do that. So if anyone's listening to this broadcast right now and is a talented artist, please certainly contact us. Assist CMU RC and MMDC with implementation of the new conceptual plan for CMU Smart Zone that was completed in '22. Continue relationship with Human Rights Committee and Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Group to enhance communication among all groups, completed in '22. Investigate more opportunities for police outreach to homeless individuals to provide additional information on resources available. Completed our stated goals of '22, that will be an ongoing process as well. Develop partnership with local entity for on-demand access of certified mental health professional for mental health-related police calls for service. We completed the onboarding of that, actually, I believe in late '21, moved through '22, collected a lot of data, which was presented to the City Commission at the last meeting. I think we'll probably have ongoing discussions about this, but we really like what we're seeing so far in that program. Reinstitute the annual leaders luncheon with other units of government, that's been completed. Convert city hall lighting to LED lighting, that was completed. Continue system-wide inventory of water service line construction materials to meet EGLE requirements. We stated our or we completed our work plan for 2022, and that will be ongoing in 2023 as well, as we continue to try to identify all of the water lines in the city to identify what's lead and what's not. Prioritize appropriate upgrades to the stormwater system based on the multi-jurisdictional stormwater study completed in 2020. So that is completed. We'll be moving forward with a number of projects for the next 20 years, essentially. Develop an internal working group to evaluate community sustainability goals, completed and moving forward with implementation of that plan in 2023 and beyond. Identify design options for Town Center consistent with the ideas of the master plan to offer better use for public civic space. That's been moved to 2023, and we anticipate a conversation with the City Commission sometime in February. That ends my presentation.
All right. Are there any questions? Yes, we've we've completed a lot. Yes, Commissioner Ake?
First of all, I want to congratulate city manager and city staff. What an amazingly wonderful job you've done. I am really, really impressed and proud of you. So thank you. I'm just gonna clap if no one else says. Question, however. What might be challenges for you? What might pose challenges in the future for you for accomplishing the goals that you haven't already accomplished?
I would probably say the biggest goals that we face right now are just the economic headwinds. And just to I don't mean to be all doom and gloom, certainly, but of course, we all feel the effects of inflation in our own pocketbooks, and certainly, the city sees that as well. 2022, we saw a number of contracts that came in 20, 30, 40% above what our initial budgeted amount is. That obviously has a big effect as to what we can and can't do, just because it really stretches our resources going forward. You know, of course, we have talked about the impacts of the census moving forward. While we're made whole in '22 and '23 by the state, there is no promise of making us whole with regard to revenue sharing from the state going forward from there, so we do have some concerns about that. And so those would be my biggest concerns, the biggest challenges that we have to overcome going forward.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one.
Okay.
Actually, maybe I should just talk to you differently, so I'm not gonna ask.
Okay. Thank your manager dissents.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, City Commission. Thank you.
Excellent job. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I believe we are looking at a FEMA grant.
My apologies, let me settle in here and just grab some of my notes here. So I do have a few proposed changes to the City Commission. As you can see, one tonight, we are not joined by our city attorney, Mike Homier. He did inform me that unfortunately, he would be unable to attend tonight, but he would be able to attend our meeting on February 13th. So his planned update to the City Commission that we had planned for the closed session will have to be moved to then. So I would propose a cancellation of the first let me see here, the first closed session of the evening. I don't uh yeah, that'd be a cancellation of the first closed session of the evening. We also were notified today by FEMA that in order to put in for a grant that we are pursuing to help us with a study of our storm sewer system, which could then put us in line for funding for a future storm sewer project, that the adoption of the County Hazard Mitigation Plan must be done via resolution, and that just a motion to adopt would not suffice for the grant application. So I do ask that the item that is left on the dais in front of all of your workstations, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption Resolution, I ask that be added to the consent agenda this evening.
Okay.
And then just one request, perhaps, for the viewers at home this evening. We have a closed session that precedes a work session this evening. Typically, that's done because we do have the city attorney here, and we want to be respectful of that individual's time. With the city attorney no longer here, our thought was to swap the closed session with the work session, so have the work session for the closed session. That way, we could conduct the work session this evening on Zoom and on YouTube and have that broadcast, and then we could end that broadcast immediately, go into the closed session.
Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the deletions and additions. Is there a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the agenda with the additions and deletions, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. All right, we will move forward with the agenda. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you would like to state anything about the agenda items that we have before us today, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Someone will let you into the meeting, and you will be asked to state your name and your address, and then you'll be given five minutes. Is there anybody on Zoom today?
No raised hands.
No raised hands, okay. I do not see any public. Are there any emails on agenda items?
There are no emails so far.
All right, then I am going to close the public comment, and we are going to move on to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager dissents?
Receipt of petitions and communications includes the fourth quarter investment report, minutes of the planning commission from November, listing of payrolls and warrants from December 13, 2022, through January 8, 2023, report on building permits for December 2022, crisis and trauma response clinician report for 2022.
Thank you. Are there any consent items that the Commission would like taken off the consent calendar and placed in the reg- regular agenda? Seeing non-manager dissents, can you please go through the consent?
Absolutely. Consent items includes the approval of minutes from the regular meeting held January 9, 2023. Consider resolution and support a final approval of temporary traffic control order number one, 2023. Consider resolution and support a final approval of temporary traffic control order number two, 2023. Receive request to create an obsolete property rehabilitation act district to include the Mission Pickard DDA boundary and set a public hearing for February 13, 2023 on the same. Receive an ordinance to amend Chapter 116, subsection 3B12 of Title 11, Business Regulations of the City's Code entitled Electric Scooters and Skateboards, and set a public hearing for February 13, 2023. Consider setting a special meeting for discussion on goals and objectives from Monday, February 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Consider setting a special meeting for follow-up discussion on goals and objectives from Monday, March 6, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Consider resolution adopting the Isabella County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
Do we need a motion?
I need a motion. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the consent? Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Consent calendar or consent items have been presented. We have no public hearings today, but we will move on to new business. Consider the update to to the guidelines criteria of the new Neighborhood Enhancement Grants as part of Michigan State Housing Development Authority's Round Six Distribution. Manager dissents?
So during the execution of Round Six of the Mishda monies that we received and the Higher Achievers Award through the Neighborhood Enhancement Grant Program, staff encountered several problems during this process. This included the discovery of new issues when the contractor would start working on the homeowner's issue that drove up costs. Of course, we saw other things drive up costs, including supply chain issues, delays, and other things that led to higher prices. These problems led to the expending of $3,574 of city funds that were not in compliance with the guidelines set by the City Commission. The City Commission's guidelines require that no project go above $10,000, and that projects between $7,500 and $10,000 would have to require a 25% homeowner match just on that amount between 75 thou- or $7,500 and $10,000. At this time, the city staffs had a hard time collecting on some of the 25% match for some of the homeowners because it was unforeseen. Some folks have said that they've just been unable to pay it. So the City Commission is asked to consider one of two options to correct the issue. In option one, the City Commission would increase the project cap to $11,000, and that would be required of both options as well, too, because in any case, we had to go over the $10,000. Again, in option one, the city would waive the requirement for the 25% homeowner match on the projects and issue refunds to those that paid the 25% match. This would be done to ensure essentially equal treatment amongst all the participants within Round Six. This would expend $6,639, which the city can pay from our Hodag funds that typically accompany this program. The second option for the consideration by the City Commission is to increase the project cap to $11,000, but then still require the homeowners to either pay the 25% cost or, per the Mishda guidelines, they would have a lien placed on the home, and the project total would need to be paid in full if the home is sold in the next five years. City staff has made the recommendation to the City Commission to go with option one. We feel that we can treat people very fairly with this. We do have the ability with the Hodag funds to pay those costs. And again, some of this is just really unrelated to the homeowner in general as well, too. Again, with the increased costs, the extra repairs, those sort of things, these were not things that homeowners, you know, typically would experience in these kind of projects. So the circumstances and resulting change either way would be the guidelines incorporated into Round Eight that the city just received notice of funding for $75,000.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the recommendation of the staff to do the option one or option eight.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I just was curious how many homeowners that this issue was affecting, if we knew that?
Would have to... Six homeowners.
Six homeowners.
Six is the total.
How do we know? Again, just curious about the program. How many total homeowners were working with the program and like?
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
Okay.
So 21 have paid something?
Do you want to maybe let me have interim fire chief Doug Lobzinger come up? He works directly with the program, so he'd be able to answer those questions for everyone.
I didn't hear your question, I apologize.
If you were working with 27 homeowners, you said?
Still didn't hear you.
You said you were, I have a bad voice, so. You were working with 27 homeowners.
Correct.
Six are unable to contribute. Should we assume that 21 have contributed something?
The first round, they didn't, where they weren't asked to contribute, but we did. The city actually put a lien on the property over a certain dollar amount. We we thought that them putting a contribution by the homeowner would maybe help that, so it wouldn't be that big of a burden for them. What we found out is we'd have a bid, say, for something, and they'd pay their 25%, and then we run into extra costs. Like, we pull siding off, and we're doing a porch, and we have to get a backhoe in to actually pull it out, and that wasn't in the bid. Or we find a rotted board, like a plate. It's a big, important board, and the wall sits on it. It was rotted, so that's something like that has to be replaced. And it's really something that we felt we couldn't walk away from, because we want a happy citizen. The contractors work very hard with us, and they usually meet us in the middle. I've yet to have a contractor, when we have an overage, not work with us and donate their lead in their labor or some market. They're they're very flexible with us because they understand the what the rules are, you know? We lay it out, the guidelines in front of them, so it's just...
Okay, so question follow-up, may I ask? So technically, in sum, how much is needed to meet what you need to move this forward?
Well, I think that some of the confusion here is that it's a it's to a certain amount that the homeowner does not have to present 25%. It's over a certain amount that the homeowner...
That's correct.
Yes. Isn't it 7,500?
Yeah, 7,500 and above, they have to pay 25% contribution to. And that's like $2,501, so their contribution is 2,625.
Yeah, so if they had a $5,000 project, they wouldn't have to contribute, the city would and along with Misha would take care of it.
That's correct.
So it's the ones that were above 7,500 to 10,000 had to present 25%. So that wasn't, that wasn't a whole lot of them.
No.
No, that was only.
No. We've always tried to operate underneath that.
Yes.
And allow for some cushion. That's just like, they spoke of the HO-DAG funds. We've been allotted a certain amount of them, but we've always shot for at least 10% under that.
Yeah.
So if we have a problem, we're not gonna have to come to the city and ask them for more money.
And with this, if we, if we, if this passes, the money that's gonna pay back those people that is the housing development grant, right? And so it's not coming out of anywhere else, too.
Coming out of HO-DAG.
We're coming out of the HO-DAG funds that we have set aside to support this.
Yeah.
Director Loria?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear here, because we're, I think we're talking, when 27 projects were mentioned, that isn't 27 projects in round six. So let's shelve the number 27 right now. What we're talking about essentially is 12 projects in round six. Of those 12 projects, six did not pay their 25%. That is what we're talking about here. The, any, any going back, this only pertains to round six. Not any of the previous projects done in any previous rounds.
Okay, okay.
I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Thank you. Yeah, because, and it was mainly due to the increase in supplies.
Cost of materials.
Yes, cost of material.
And unforeseen problems with the, and we almost run into that on all of them, to a degree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve of option one. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
I meant to say yes, I was slow on the draw, sorry.
Okay.
Wake up.
I was undecided.
So you waited.
All right, we're going to move on to the appointments to city officials, to city boards and commissions. For the building authority, the finance director, Mary Ann Cordexel, to the 911 Central Dispatch Governing Board, interim fire chief Doug Lopssinger, and police captain Brandon Bliss as the alternative. Isabella County Material Recovery Facility Governing Board, Public Works Director Jason Moore and Street Superintendent Matt Weaver as the alternative. MML Legislative Coordinator, city manager Aaron DeSens. Mid-Michigan Area Cable and Communication, Telecommunications Consortium Board, Public Relations Director Darcy Orlick. Middle Michigan Development Corporation manager, city manager Aaron DeSens, and Economic Development Director Bill Merdenas as alternative. I don't think I've ever said your last name out loud, Bill. I'm sorry. Merdeza. I always just refer to you guys, Jason and Bill. There's Darcy. All right, so these have all been appointed. I hope that none of them, none of this was a surprise to any of you tonight. All right, we're going to move on to the appointments of city commissioners, to city standing and special committees. I emailed everyone, I hope you all got the emails, and this is not a surprise to any of you either. So for the appointments committee, Vice Mayor Alsager, Mary Alsager, Chair, Maureen Ake and Brian Asman as committee members. To the Central Michigan Center of Recovery, Education, and Wellness, Liz Bush. Charter committee, Mary Alsager, Chair, Brian Chapman and Boomer Wingard as members. Council of Governments, Mary Alsager. Intergovernmental liaison, myself, Amy Perschbacher and Mary Alsager as mayor and vice mayor. International relations, Sister City Council, Maureen Ake and Liz Bush. Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Council, Liz Bush. Property committee, Brian Asman as chair, Amy Perschbacher and Brian Chapman as committee members. For the audit committee, myself, Amy Perschbacher, Brian Chapman, and Brian Asman as alternative, or alternate. City and CMU Student Liaison Committee, Mary Alsager and Brian Asman. Economic Development Corporation, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, myself, Amy Perschbacher and Mary Alsager. Principal Shopping District Board, Boomer Wingard. And tax increment finance authority, Brian Asman. Let's see, I think I've done all three of those now? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to the announcements on city-related issues and new business. Are there any announcements or city-related issues, new business? Maureen, Nick.
Announcement at CMU, HILL, student, it's an RSO, HILL. It's the Jewish Student Organization at CMU. This is Jewish Heritage Month, week, rather. And so there will be conversations about, discussions of antisemitism, and we know that that is rising. There will be discussion about the Holocaust, and we know that the Holocaust denials. And there will be other events happening at CMU. So I would encourage people in the city, since we're trying to make sure that our city is welcoming and inclusive and receptive to diversity, to hopefully attend these events. They are free to the public. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, the Grashet Isabella Technical Education Center is going to be having their yearly open house on February 2, 2023, yeah, from 5:30 to 7:30. The program, it provides hands-on technical training and experience to high school students who are placed in a work-study program, and I'm gonna be attending. It's something that I think would be a really, I think it'd be a very interesting program for the city to look into, potentially having high school students do internships or actual, like, work-study programs in the different city departments, and I'm working on learning more about that so I can bring back more and discuss with the city staff and commissioners. So that's gonna be going on, yeah.
Excellent. Anyone else? All right, now we've come to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you'd like to come forward and state a comment, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you are joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature, or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting, and you'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. I see no audience in our live session. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak at this time?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Are there any emails?
No, there are none.
Okay, then I am going to close the public comment section. At this time, I am, what we're going to do is, because we're going to move the work session up in front of the closed session, I am going to ask for a motion to accept the closed session. The motion, and it will have to be a roll call. So the motion is to consider closed session pursuant of subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act. Am I okay? Okay, you guys started scuttling over there, I was like, what did I do? To discuss the strategy and negotiation sessions connected to the negotiation of the collective bargaining agreement. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Clerk, please take a roll call. Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Ake?
I.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will take a five-minute recess and come back for our work session.
That's anything coming to the screen, that's what I'm worried about. That looks like the HDMI is plugged.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't have it, it won't be the end of the world.
See, I'll try to jog the cable and see if that helps. Well, it's selected to go there, but.
Select the source below.
It's selected to go there already, but maybe the HDMI isn't in all the way.
You know what I'm gonna do? I'm calling Chris.
No, he's at that funeral, don't.
What, I didn't know you was at a funeral.
You have a visitation tonight.
So what about Mike?
I would try that.
There may be a key to project to the screen on here, but I don't know, it's like the twenty. Looks like that should work just like that.
Says there's no signal.
Yeah, so the HDMI's, I'm gonna check that.
Where's this going?
That's for networking.
Is it plugged in?
Hey, real quick, we're in a recess, and we can't get the PowerPoint for the work session to go.
To the projector.
To the projector at all. Can you walk us through it?
Yep, the PowerPoint's on the laptop. But we, we have it on the laptop, we see no signal on the monitor, straight ahead on the wall, and the large screen is nothing but purple. Aaron said it worked earlier, so I'm not.
I'll try some plugging.
Well, before the meeting. Okay, so let me see here. I'm trying to see what's, okay, so we have the little, the thing on the, that says dais or whatever. All right, we got that. And then that, I'm trying to see where everyone plugs the fan, that is plugged into, right? The thing to the left, with the red background. Let me take a picture of it.
Face down.
Yeah, that looks like it should look, I think.
It looks like somebody stole a piece of crap out of this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it does.
I would say the cords may have in the back of this.
Boy, that's a good guess, I think. They kinked the hell out of it.
It's falling apart right out of there.
I'm gonna go back in my little dungeon. So we're not gonna have a PowerPoint?
I don't know yet.
I'm all right.
They all have a paper cut in front of them.
Okay, I just texted you.
I have no idea, I'm coming in this way.
Light does fire brighter.
What's that?
Nothing.
No, the mics are live?
Oh, sorry. I'm ready to go. I wanna get it, you know, I'm excited.
All right. We're just having a little technical difficulty.
I'm here for entertainment while we wait.
All right.
Well, you guys want me to sing a song?
That'd be good.
Well, Rebels has karaoke on Thursday night.
Row your boat.
There you go.
Anything a little less maritime?
Probably.
What do you got?
I don't know, I just, I like everything.
Hey, Beatles?
Not well, but I could try.
Yeah, let's do Beatles.
Sunny and Cher, duet?
Which one do you do?
I do Sunny. That's fine. Yeah, your voice is clearly deeper than mine.
Yes, it is.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna be, you can't be Sunny if your voice is deeper. Cher has a deeper voice than Sunny.
Oh, she does?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
I walked into that one.
I just assumed that she was at a little bit higher octave.
Okay, you've never heard Cher sing?
I have, but.
That's the song I got you, babe.
Yeah.
You can tell the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's a tenor.
I think we. I think we should sample it real quick while we wait.
Okay, you want me to find it on my, on YouTube?
Apple Music, please.
I think the mic issue is the problem, so, I mean, mic issue is the problem, from what I understand, so...
Yes.
There's nothing, I still get no signal.
The computer not working, is that the problem?
You're good? You're golden.
We had a slight pause for technical difficulty that couldn't be figured out, so we're not gonna have the PowerPoint, we're just gonna wing it. So, I believe you have, uh, some pictures of what the PowerPoint looks like.
Yep.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to follow up on our November 28th discussion of regarding property maintenance standards and the International Property Maintenance Code, which we finally call IPMC. Our goal for this evening, we need to determine if a work session and possibly a public hearing regarding the, the expansion of the IPMC to all residential and commercial properties, not just rental units, should be scheduled or considered. Like to start first by defining the function of both the property maintenance standard and the IPMC. The purpose of our current property maintenance standard is to protect the public health and safety, prevent and minimize blight, and establish minimum property standards. Without the IPMC, our current standard provides limited enforcement options for residential and commercial properties and limits the city's ability to address blight issues early on. A little history and to give you a little bit of a background on the International Property Maintenance Code, it's been in existence since 1999. It's been adopted by forty states, including Michigan and the District of Columbia. Communities all across the state, all across the United States have adopted that and are using it in the same fashion that we are looking at doing today. Communities across the state, some of them include university towns such as Allendale, Elma, Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, Ypsilanti, just to name a few. Other communities who have adopted the IPMC include, but are not limited to, Bay City, Brighton, Charlevoix, Grand Rapids, Iron Mountain, and Royal Oak. So, from big cities to little cities, we see a lot of communities utilizing this. In 2007, Mount Pleasant adopted the IPMC exclusively for rental properties. And it has been successful since this implementation, which I believe is evident as, evident, evident as you travel downtown, down Main Street or Washington, and you see the, some of the conditions of the, the rental units in that, they are, they look very nice. I think the property maintenance code is a good guide for that. Some of the benefits of the IPMC include... Improperty ordinance for all property types, residential, rental, and commercial would improve our neighborhood aesthetics and also boost our property values. Enforcement consistency, as a result of the IPMC, would make a positive influence on our neighborhoods, especially those which have a mixed single-family and multifamily properties in their neighborhoods. Benefits continued. The IPMC will focus on common exterior maintenance issues, issues such as peeling paint, yard blight, dilapidated porches, and roofing siding disrepair to be addressed in the same manner. For example, if there's a residential or a commercial structure that has siding missing or a bad roof, the city is not currently able to address those issues with the owner because the IPMC is only adopted for the rental units. And if you have questions on these, when we get done, we can, we can go over those. If you'd like to ask questions now, I'm okay with that, too.
Is there a reason why we only adopted it in 2007 for rental units? And we didn't just make it across the board?
I, I couldn't really answer that question for you intelligently.
Okay. I just wondered, because it seems like if you're going to adopt something like that, you would just, you know, spread the icing across the entire cake.
Well, we found that, uh, cities adopt ordinances to achieve certain goals, like set up a goal for them, and when they do that, there's a lot of hurdles they have, they come across. And a lot of time spent and a lot of time with the attorney trying to make sure that it's done right and it's proper, and, uh... So, what they're finding is that they're just adopting the IPMC because this wheel's already been invented. And it's just, and the, the consistency's nice, because we use international fire code, uh, building code, Michigan rehab code, they're all from ICC, so the codes all the way across the board are consistent with one another. They're calling an apple an apple and orange an orange.
Yeah.
I have a question. So, let's assume that you, that we adopt, you know, these, uh, codes within the next few months. What does, what would be the implications for people who currently may have these problems, like peeling paint?
Yeah.
Yard blight, I mean, residential, not rental? Are you gonna grandfather them in, or do you give them a certain length of time to address the codes before we start penalizing?
I kinda answered that further in.
You can?
I do answer that a little bit further, but I will bring that up when we get to the end.
Okay.
Some more continued benefits. With the IPMC put in place for all property types, um, blight issues like the examples just given can be addressed by city staff early on, therefore preventing further deterioration. And once they get deteriorated to a certain point, it's almost not bringing them back around, or it's very, very costly. So, we wanna try to address these early. The IPMC would offer enforcement tools for residential and commercial properties, which currently do not exist. With the implementation of the IPMC, additional grant funding opportunities are possible or could be created, and the IPMC and its enforcement has a proven track record in the court system. And then to our enforcement process. With the adoption of the IPMC, the enforcement process would be consistent to our current rental property enforcement. First is education of the property standards and the responsibilities that the owner has. Suggestions are then provided to individuals on how to remedy issues, followed by referring residents to any available programs and grant opportunities that may exist. After those options have been exhausted, a citation could be written. But it, it could be, you know, those are things we're gonna have to look at and evaluate, and we currently, currently do that with our rental programs. Somebody has a bad roof or needs to paint the outside of their home, well, in Mount Pleasant, there's only a few months a year where you can get that done effectively, right? So, obviously, we're going to work with them. And, uh, again, our goal is not to adopt this to penalize people or to write tickets, it's to gain compliance. And we want to bring issues up early on, why they're minor to repair, before they are, become a big issue. Did I answer your question on the enforcement side?
Kind of. We just, a short while ago, we discussed the situation where certain people were unable to pay to, uh, whatever, the twenty-five percent or a certain amount of money towards a project we're engaged in. What happens when we identify residents who then say to you, "I can't do this now"? Is there a grace period? "I can't do it within the next month"? "I cannot do it within the next three months"? "I am thinking of doing it, but I haven't done it because..." Is there a grace period? Because I'm concerned about that, where we adopt a policy or, you know, ordinance?
We get these questions quite regularly in the rental side, where I have a landlord say, "Every time I have to do something, I do it, I do it right away, my properties are in excellent shape, and I have one next to me that's a rental unit, and every year, it's a problem after problem after problem." Well, we do have a process that we follow.
Okay.
And you, this person over here, when, soon as it's brought up that it's in a violation or needs to be fixed, it's taken care of. Not everybody operates that way, not everybody can operate that way. So, that, therefore, it might take us two or three years to get a compliance on a rental unit for different reasons. Sometimes we're, information that is relayed to us, I could say maybe we're being taken advantage of, but we're also treating people like we'd like to be treated. You know, like maybe somebody lost a job and he's asked for six or eight months to, to get the, get it done, he's already came up with a plan. He presents the plan to us, we accept the plan. Now, when it comes time, "Oh, you didn't meet your plan, how come you don't", you know, "It's getting close, what's going on"? Or they'll call us and say, "Hey, I've got a problem". "What's the problem"? Okay. "Is this something that we can kick down the road"? "How, what's the remedy"? "What's your suggestion"? And we work with people, like, the, the project that I just told you about, the house next door, the homeowner passed away. We worked with her for a year to try to figure out a way for her to fix some minor issues on the outside of her rental property. She passed away, house went back to probate, we had yard problems, we had house problems, but today, those problems are all taken care of. Took us three years to work through that. The homeowner next door, that's a rental, wants to know why this is going on like this. Why? Well, this is what the system is. Some people go right out and will do whatever we ask of them and have the ability to do that. Other people need to be educated, they don't understand why the rules are, what the rule means, or the timeframe, and sometimes they work the system a little bit. They know how to do that, that, that's just kind of, the, but that's okay, that's our system, that we work to be fair to everybody. So, would, would we give a grace period? We're, part of this is that we need to get the ordinance passed, so we can find out how big of a problem this is in Mount Pleasant. And if you're saying, "Okay, there's a problem", what are you basing that on? What's the standard for that? Well, our standard is the IPMC, and this is what we're comparing to. Once we find out what the problem is, some answers may have to be found. I believe you were up first.
Yeah, um, that kinda leads into updating the code, um, it sounds like you're looking for like grounds to bring things up. What is, can you just talk about, like, to address and discuss things with a homeowner? I know the last time there was a work session, it was like, "Okay, we can see things, but they're not technically out of violation" or something, but I guess, how does that, um, at what point are you able to initiate a conversation and initiate that interaction where we're starting to work with this, like?
I'll answer that as I move through, too.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I won't, let me see where I'm at. Let me just answer your question, um... Ask it one more time.
Yeah, um...
So, I make sure I understood it correctly.
At what point are you able to...
Address the resident.
Like officially, like officially address.
Our current ordinance that we have, that's a property maintenance standard, we created ourself. It's a very broad ordinance and doesn't give us a lot of ability or authority to request some of the things that we would like, and it almost becomes subjective. And it's un, it's untested in the courtroom yet. So, with adopting the IPMC, it is not necessarily as broad, it's more specific in, in areas. And that gives me the ability to go in and talk about why I feel this debris in your yard is a blight issue, and defines it a little bit better, and gives us some tools to use to call it that and then to address it. Now, at the end of the day, somebody's gotta take care of it. That's where the plan comes in. And based on our experience in the past, this is gonna be a, a work in progress for a while. This is not going to be anything where we wave our magic wand and create a rule and it works. We're, we would adopt something like this. We're gonna have to come up with, uh, an appeal board so that we can, you know, we're gonna have to design that. We're going to have to design how we enforce it and how we implement it. And those are things that we'll probably continue to have some discussion on. The key thing for me is we can identify a property. A city has the, a right through the building official to condemn a home and to have it demolished, have the people removed from it if they're, you know, and it's not a, a very effective tool or a positive one for the community. We don't have any tools from, like, somebody needs to paint their house until it, well, it's got a hole in the roof, it's leaking rain, it's unsafe to live in, it becomes unsafe. That's the next time we can really step in and make an impact on the property. This would allow us to bring everything up on an even plane, rental property, homeowner property, commercial property, where they both meet the same standard. And again, this is a, this is a minimum standards for health, safety, and public welfare.
Commissioner Chapman?
So, well, I had a question, and then you said, one of the things is, like, we, the goal is to adopt this to then figure out the problems, and, and in my mind, that's backwards. So, one of the things I wondered is, you know, I, I don't, I don't have an issue with, obviously, there's a minimum standard for everything, right? I have a rental license, I understand that. But one of the things I wonder is what, um, is how does, how does it negatively, I mean, because we talk about the benefits of the, of the PCMI, we understand that. So, so what are the problems that are happening in the city? Not what, what does this fix, I understand what it fixes. What are the problems that we're actually seeing on a day-to-day basis to say, "This is what we need to do to solve those problems"? Because I don't wanna just say, "Let's just pass it and then we'll figure out the problems", right? I wanna say, "Here's the problem, if this is the solution to fix that problem, I'm all for it".
Well, if, if, if that's the impression I left, I communicated ineffectively, because what this will do, I think it's important that we pass the IPMC first, because it clearly defines what the problem is and what the standard is that we're comparing it to. We go out there and we identify properties that can't afford to fix that, don't have the resources to fix that, and then we can bring that data back and look at, do we have a blight problem or a property standards problem in the city that people can't afford to fix? And if we do, what can we do as a community and as a city to make an impact on that? I think that's really the bigger question. And right now, I could ask everybody in here, "Do you think we have a blight problem in the city?", and I'd get different answers. This collects the information in one spot, it's based on a standard, and now, okay, this is what we found, what are we gonna do with it? You know, so I, I do appreciate your feedback that, you know, we're getting the cart in front of the horse, maybe, but, um...
Well, especially if I'm being asked to vote. Like, I'm asked to vote to say, "Hey, let's pass this so we can figure out the problems". For me, it's like, "Okay, we have a blight problem, this is how to fix it, not we have, let's, let's, let's pass this so we can figure out if we have the problem", you know what I mean?
Right. No, I totally understand that, and I think we do...
And you know better than I do, I don't, I don't have a clue, I don't know.
I've gotten several letters this fall from, from people that have moved into the community, and they moved out of a community where they did have blight. And now they've moved in here and they thought they were gonna avoid some of that and are finding out that they're not. And they're, they're calling, wanting to know what we can do. And we're doing the best that we can with that right now, but I, that has, there has been an uptick...
Yeah, yeah.
Of yard waste, of non-compliance, you know, and it's a continuing problem. We, we, in the, the short four or five years that I've been in, with, dealing with the NRU, we've seen a number of abandoned homes in Mount Pleasant that we've never used to have in the past. City manager.
If I may, just to illustrate some of the examples as well, too, just across the street from the...
Just across the street from the Borden Building here, we had recently a commercial property that was torn down. Essentially, that commercial property was torn down because eventually the roof went on it, weatherization, weather got in there, and, and the structure was just non-salvageable at that point. You have other structures as well in the downtown that we know that are in very rough shape structurally because of some of these weatherization issues. And then even some of the early signs of that, you can even identify, and, and I've had many complaints come to my office about some of the buildings in the downtown because of their appearance, because of their lack of paint. But that is also how that starts as well, too, of course, is with chipping and peeling paint. Eventually, rain, snow, it all gets in there, it starts rotting away at the wood, and then you start having some structural issues as well. So those are some of the issues in particular that we're looking to address. I've also had recently some other complaints come into my office, in particular, some properties in residential districts on the west side of the city that have come under scrutiny as well. And some of that is structural and, you know, peeling paint, you know, falling siding and soffit issues as well, too. And then also some of the same complaints on the north side as well. So we do know, we have them out there. Just kind of depends on the particular areas mostly, is what I would say.
And, and let me, I just, I want to just add a little bit to what the city manager said. We could drive around and, and show pictures. We're not here to embarrass anybody. We, we talked about examples in, in our community that are applicable, and we opted against that. That's not, but if you pay attention, you, you can go around town and, and see houses that have the peeling paint that are already deteriorating, houses that have yellow tape around their front porch and, and whatnot because it's unsafe. So as much as, I mean, I can show you what a hole in a roof looks like and say, this is what a hole in a roof looks like, and, and water's going to get in there. I mean, we all know, but when you ask, you know, specifics, just realize, we're still a small community. We're not trying to embarrass anybody. And the, the problems are strictly to the exterior of the residence. When the, the fire chief said something about going in, he's speaking about not in the house, but it's strictly to the exterior of the residence. There's no, nothing done to the interior, so to speak.
Okay, I have a couple, couple pages yet. Might answer some more questions, and then I'll open that back up. I want to talk a little bit about our appeals process on page nine. Under the IPMC, if a resident disagrees with a citation, they can file an appeal and go to, to an administrative board. This board would have to be set up by the city. It usually is consistent of a building official and a city attorney and a couple of other people on it to see. And then if they disagree with that, they still have the option of circuit court, to challenge it in circuit court. But that's something that we would work through to set up. It's very similar to what we've done on the rental side. In summary, adoption of the IPMC across property types would provide consistency, which is essential when enforcing property standards. We bring everybody, try to bring everybody up to the same standard. Other university towns and communities similar to Mount Pleasant have recognized that benefit and went to that. An early intervention due to the IPMC will not only enhance our city's public health and safety, but ultimately boost property values and neighborhood aesthetics. Any questions?
I want to say I appreciate this. I understand the concern, my, my colleague's concern, but I think when you started, you indicated that this already exists for rental property, and now what we're doing is expanding this particular ordinance to include residential property. Am I correct in my understanding of that?
That would be correct.
Okay. So, and, and we do know, I mean, I have, I walk around this city. You know, there are very few streets in this city that I don't know. And I was telling either the commit, the mayor or vice mayor the other day about a number of houses, properties, places in this community that we could do something to address. And then this comes up. I think this is important. It's not punitive. It is to make us whole. It is to make the city safe. We have a large population of students who live not only in, you know, rental property, but they also live in other residential places. And this has tremendous implications for students, faculty, staff moving in here, you know, and looking for decent places to live. So yes, I, I appreciate this. I understand that it might be uncomfortable for some people. People will complain, whether it's uncomfortable or not, we will always complain about things. It is just being human. But if we have to do something to make sure that we don't have a city full of rodents, we don't have a city filled with trash, we don't have a city where people are sending us email messages like the one we just got from one of our residents complaining about trash. I get people throwing trash in my area, but I pick all of that up. But then what about people who don't? You know, so yes, I, I think we have to do something to make sure that we live in very healthy spaces so that we don't have health hazard eventually because, you know, things are not being kept up.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Mish, you win guard.
Yeah, I was hoping you could talk a bit more. So by, by having this, I mean, reviewing, reviewing, it's a hundred, over a hundred pages, I think I was reviewing it. It has very clear definitions in the backend of, it just has a glossary of like, what is the term that we're talking about? And so it allows us to check boxes essentially of like, we don't need broad definitions of, it's like, oh, this, this meets XYZ standards, check that box, and it allows us to compile the actual hard data that we would need. That kind of leads into my question, which is qualifies for additional grant funding opportunities. Can you talk about what that looks like? I'd be happy, I'd be really interested.
Well, we've used the NRU's NEP grant a couple of times. Every round, we try to find a home that, that we can get into that program and get that person to apply and try to make that work as much as we can. We've been pretty successful with that, with those two properties. Now, there's, there's, the state has like a winterization program, the city manager was sharing with me for exterior type stuff. Mish just got a My Hope program where they're giving up to a million dollars to a community that we're currently applying for. We have the, the latest round eight of the NEP where we're, Mish is giving us $75,000. We'll be bringing that before you here shortly to get some direction on how to, to move forward with that and using whole dad funds or whatever we can to do the best that we can with that amount of money. There's got to be more that are out there, that's out there to find. But without the solid data that shows this is based on this standard, an international standard that 40 states are using, and we're identifying this as blight, and we've identified a need for that citizen, that citizen, and that citizen. We've got a lot of good people in the city that we've, we're going to, somebody's going to figure out a way to try to do something. Or we can work with them on family members. There are church groups in the community that go out and make those types of repairs. By no means is the city going to be the fix-all for this, but we can be part of the solution. And once we can start having the discussion on it, that's where we can educate people and show the need. What's out there? I don't know. There's a lot of neighborhood grants through the state of Michigan that if you're a neighborhood association, you can put in for, that most people don't do, most neighbor associations don't do. So I don't have a lot of answers for that. I see a lot of possibilities, I guess.
Okay. I just want to, last thing I just want to say is, I, I really appreciate the philosophy you've been presenting this whole time as we've been working on this of like, this is, my concern would just be over time and like years to come, like changing like staff members and everything, if you move on to a different position or anything, or if there's different commissioners up here and like, we're looking at how it's applied, is just, it could easily be used to be punitive as well versus educating. And when you've come to us, you've been presenting a philosophy of education, which I really appreciate. I just think, I, I think we can just also, as we were having these discussions, look for ways to make sure we embed that philosophy along with the, that philosophy in the policy. And that's just.
I did a lot of researches, researching on communities that are where we're at right now and have went through that. And they get a, a lot of citizens and staff members that bring up some of their fears about how's this going to have a negative impact this way and that way. And most all of them that I read on didn't come to fruition, it never happened. And I think that goes back to how the city goes about doing business and goes about enforcing that. But realize, there are going to be people that, that get citations for failing or to comply. Like, let me give you an example. I walk over, my code officer walks over to your yard, and you got two cars that are in the yard and bumper that's fallen off, and that's a property standards violation. And you tell us, sorry, this is my property, I'm not doing nothing, get off my property. Probably going to pay him a visit again, going to try to, another sales pitch, a different angle, educating them on what the ordinance is. If that continues, they don't have much of a choice. They're probably going to write the ticket. Now, if there's some discussion about trying to find, creating a plan, that's something to move forward with.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, I am assuming that if this is an international standard that you are going to use, it will be one, you know, people, and you said there is going to be education, right? So there will be some, you know, brochure that says, these are the standards. It's like going to take your driver's license exam, tells you what is a violation, what is not a violation. You violated, this is what happens. You educate people, they know that. So long as the ordinance, and this is going to be a, an ordinance, so it's not going to be arbitrarily applied, I'm assuming, because you will follow these guidelines, these established standards or agreed upon standards, right? So, everybody knows it, and hopefully, everybody follows, and hopefully, we'll have peace. Of course, there'll be people who would complain. I'm not saying that that won't happen. But so long as we make sure that people know this and that we understand what these are, and they know where to go get the information if they need it, you know, then you do the education and the implementation. I'm okay for it.
And I compare this again to our rental adoption of it. We don't write very many tickets in a year. We get about 90, 95% compliance based on education and creating a plan to find compliance, something that will work for both parties. Sometimes, we can't reach that. And, but I don't think we've written more than four or five tickets in a year in my 26 years here full-time.
Yeah.
That I know of.
Well, I appreciate it. I think that having a standard that goes across the board is very important, so nobody can say, well, these guys get this and we, we get this, and why is ours this and not that? I think that it also helps us be more uniformed in what happens within the city. Helping residents, businesses, rental property owners understand that by taking care of the property, it not only helps improve their value of the property, also it helps improve the value of the city and of their neighborhood, and it increases that, that civic pride, which is what I think that we, we tend to lack every once in a while. It kind of like wanes a little bit and comes back. And I think that that is one of the things that we should be looking at. Now, in a work session, we do not make any motions. We do not vote. This is all information brought to us so that the, the staff can understand how we're feeling about it and where the, if there's any direction we would like them to take.
I, I might add that currently in discussions outside, just, you know, just in general, you are in other places, environmentally, we've been talking about safe and sustainable cities. And for me, this works, this feeds into that because it helps to make a city safe. It also helps to make a city sustainable. So I just, I'm just adding that, just so.
Are there any other comments from the commission?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Good evening.
All right, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our work session. We are going to take a two-minute break while anybody who is not supposed to be here can leave so we can go into the closed session.